For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening, welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, December 4th, 2017. Call the roll, please.
Johnson?
Here. Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noack?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
And Walagora?
Here. Please rise to the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes, regular session on November 20th, 2017, and closed session of November 20th, 2017. Any issues? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during our council meeting that you're allowed to address council. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
I'm Paul Plannin Development Director. I just want to let you know, the License and Regulatory Affairs Department at the State did finally come out with emergency rules regarding medical marijuana. I told you previously I would try to keep you updated. It's 33, 34 pages, somewhere around there. I haven't had time to really dive into it, it just came out this afternoon, but we'll look at it and figure out what's going on. There's one or two surprises already, there aren't going to allow outdoor girl areas, that kind of thing. But I will, I'll keep you informed, but I wanted to let you know and get you a copy.
Thank you.
And I also apologize, I'm going to have to depart on my book today. But if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Makes sense. Anyone else?
We'll probably bring it back at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Give you a chance to look at it and then probably give some type of summary and then answer any questions. Probably just try to.
Consent agenda this evening. A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $1,123,392.9. B is designate council member Cindy Johnson and council member Mike Noack to represent the council on the committee for the replacement of the city assessor upon his retirement in the summer of 2018. C is a collection of 2018 property taxes for the Alpena Public School District and the Alpena Mount Renzi-Alcona Educational Service District. D is approval of Memorial Day, 4th of July, and Christmas parades held in the city limits in 2018. And E is approval of the 2018 municipal council meeting schedule.
Have we approved the consent agenda as presented?
Second. Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Hi.
Okay, nothing down until 11:00. Report of officers. A is Public Act 152 Health Insurance Premium Opt-Out. Taking that one.
This will kind of be a repeat of what you've probably heard for the last three or four years, but over the last five years, the council has concurd with a request by myself to opt-out of PA 152 Health Insurance Cost Options. There are two of those. One is a default, and that is the hard cap. The other is the 80/20 split, which must be voted on annually by the council and passed by a majority vote. Each year, we've asked for an opt-out, which requires a two-thirds vote, or four out of five in this case for us. We've always had a unanimous vote. Originally, the purpose was to allow a phase-in of the 80/20 over a four-year period rather than jumping right into it all at once. That we reached in July of 2016. Last year, we changed our insurance plans to include high deductible health savings account plans, and as a result of that, we had considerable cost savings, but in reality, because we not only paid our 80% of the premium, the employee paid their 20, the city contributed to their HSAs, or in some cases, flexible savings account if they didn't participate in a high deductible plan. As a result, the city, in reality, paid more than 80% of the total cost of health care, even though it did save us money, which was the reason we opted out, was to allow us to do that. This year, when we got our premiums, we got the good news that rates were going up 22.2%, which of all the ones I've heard from other communities was by far the highest, except for one that I think went up 32%. And that was disappointing considering all the work we had done to go into the high deductible plans. So we did meet with our representatives, both HUB, our agent, and also Blue Cross, to talk about options, and then met with our Health Insurance Committee, which is what I'll call it, which included representatives from all the unions and admin, and we sat down with those same reps to see if we could reach a consensus. We had a lot of good discussion, and we did reach a consensus on basically modifying the four plans we had. This reduced the cost, we also reduced the amount the city put in, which I had forewarned all employees at the time we started going into the HSA plans, that the amount we were providing into the plan, our contribution, was very top-heavy to start with. The idea was to get, kind of seed money, get people going, they would also make investments in the HSA, but that it was unlikely, because costs would go up, that we would not be able to sustain that. We were paying anywhere from 95% to 98% of the deductible. Actually, in hearing what other communities have done, again, from city managers, a lot of them were about half, but there were many of them that were much more than that and even paid 100% of the deductible. So we weren't really totally out of line doing that. This time around, it's been reduced to 75% of the deductible, knowing that that could change again, because I think all of us in our committee, I made quite clear, and I think they already knew it, that we would probably be back together again next year, looking at this again, unless we're very fortunate with a very minimal increase. So despite all this, we were able to work, as we worked through it, we reached a consensus, we got it down to somewhere in the neighborhood of around 3.5% or so percent increase, in a very dependent upon who takes what policies. That's a pretty close estimate, which is much better than 22.2%. But still, it means we are paying more than the 80% to do that, even though we're reducing our contributions to the HSA and the FSAs. So once again, I'm asking that council vote to opt-out of PA 152, that would allow us to do what we are doing, that appears, at least in my opinion, and the others, is that it's what works for the employee, still provides them quality health care at a reasonable price, and still for a reasonable price to the city as well, because they have to work for their partners. So that's my request at this time. We do not need to, as in the past, until last year, we always had to provide a copy of the motion to the Treasury. We no longer have to do that, we just keep it on file, and if for any reason the council decides not to opt-out, then you will need to vote every year on the 80/20. At this point in time, and probably for the foreseeable future, we'll be asking for the opt-out.
Questions?
Any word for us?
Any questions for that for me?
I move we opt-out of PA 152.
Second.
And that'll be for calendar year 2018.
Thank you.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Thanks Greg. Next up are bids. Soda vending services.
Rich. In 2011, soda vending services was bid, and the contract was awarded to Pepsi Beverage Company. In 2012, with a 25% commission rate on 800 cases sold, and 30% commission on anything over 800 cases. Contract allowed for renewal, where Pepsi proposed a flat 30% commission on all cases sold, and was awarded the renewal. That current contract is set to expire on December 31st. On November 28th of this year, the city received an open bids for soda vending services. This includes providing soda vending services for the city parks and other facilities designated by the City of Alpena. Bid documents were sent to three vendors, with only one bid received as listed below. Pepsi Beverage Company had a machine, vending price of $1.50 per 20-ounce bottle, with a commission rate of 30% for all sold. It's my recommendation to city engineers that the soda vending contract be awarded to Pepsi Beverage Company for the 30% commission rate the city is currently receiving on any cases sold, for the duration of the three-year contract ending on December 31st, 2020, with the possibility of one additional three-year renewal.
Rich, just a couple of quick questions. The 30 cent commission rate, is that right in line with what they do across the board, or?
Greg asked me that same thing, I made some calls, and I couldn't get an answer, but I said, when we, the last time we had any competition, I think they were at the 25%, and they beat out the competitors at that, so.
Okay. And I'm sure with all that commission, that takes care of all the maintenance in the parks.
Oh yeah.
That's all I have. I have nothing. Thank you, Rich. Anyone?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble reading my screen, so.
I move we award the pop vending bid recommendation to Pepsi Beverage Company.
Second.
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Communications and petitions, we have Tim Coonline, Board President of MACNE, Michigan Arts and Culture Northeast. He's going to report on the Lake Huron Discovery Tour of 2017. Tim?
Good evening, everyone, welcome, and thank you for the opportunity to report out on the 2017 Lake Huron Discovery Tour, and to thank you once again for the third year of supporting that endeavor. It was another successful year. Katie Wolf and Chris Latulsi are here with me from the committee. Katie took leadership of the Lake Huron Discovery Tour this year, and we did it again. And of course, we, as you know, followed up on the 2017 Governor's Award for Innovative Collaboration Tourism, which was a great launch and a vindication of a lot of what we're doing. It was the city's donation, the contribution, the partnership that we have with MACNE kind of taking charge of arts and cultural endeavors, partly for the city. We did double the money. We were able to get grants from Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs, as well as Harrisville Chamber, Thunder Bay Arts Council, and Michigan Arts and Culture Northeast itself was able to generate some revenue to contribute. And so all told, we ended up with $8,100 in cash, and a lot in kind, so your money wasn't working alone, it was creating incentive for other groups to join us. We also had an intern this year, which was really kind of neat, a former student of mine, Kewell Schatz of Central Michigan University, and she actually is majoring in event planning. She made contact through NOAA and expressed interest, Katie made the connection, and we were able to use her and let her get some experience working with this project, and she provided major hands-on interaction with the whole region, driving up and down US-23, the 200-mile distance, a couple of times at least, preventing outreach and delivering materials to help make this year's event a success. There were 60 special events listed, over 60 special events listed on the NEMCOG US-23 Heritage Route website. That's in addition to the 3,000 listed assets that people can take advantage of year-round, but those special efforts around this tour weekend created a lot of additional buzz. The month prior to the tour, so September, leading up through that first weekend of October, there were 8,900 sessions on the NEMCOG US-23 Heritage website, and they viewed over 18,000 pages of related activity to the tour. We did reach out, I know that many of you have expressed concern, as shared with me, about getting broader support from surrounding communities, and like every year, we reach out, but I think this year, we made a concerted effort. There was a whole team that went down and presented to, oh, a developed biosco, which we had presented to in the past, and they had donated, but we didn't receive any contributions this year from that effort. There was a lot of interest expressed, a lot of support, a lot of verbal reinforcement, but once again, the financial support didn't prove itself to be the case. What that says, I don't know. I suspect a lot of it is that, like with many things like this, where there's a lot of volunteer effort, people assume it's getting done, and they turn a blind eye and continue to free ride, but who knows? We made it very clear, however, that the City of Alpena has helped with this bill for three years in a row, and that we probably would not be doing that continually, especially if there was not interest with finances expressed by surrounding municipalities. So where we go from here, I'm not sure. Realize this is a totally volunteer effort. A lot of us have put a lot of time in, there are five people in particular who do the yeoman's share of the work, but there's no question this is having an impact. There's no question whatsoever. Sheboygan this year, like Tallis in the previous year, Sheboygan really grabbed onto this, and in the past, Sheboygan was quite a, kind of a silent partner in all this, they really didn't express much interest, but they fostered a fall fest, and it was a weekend-long extravaganza of a couple dozen events in and of themselves within the town of Sheboygan. They were really alive. They clearly took the award for enthusiasm, like Harrisville did last year, and certainly Alpena the year before that, the inaugural year of this. Alpena's been steadfast through this whole process, whether we're the center of attention and creating the most buzz or not, I think you all saw the benefit of creating a greater awareness about arts and culture in Northeast Michigan, particularly from Alpena, but the regional collaboration being something that could really draw attention to Northeast Michigan in a way, from the outside world, in a way that Northeast Michigan is not known for. And we've certainly put ourselves on the map. It's not just our efforts at MACNE, but I think we helped set a tone, not only for regional economic development, but locally, right here, to realize that arts and culture are just as important as industry, and if you don't have one, you can't have the other, and you may have one, but the other is kind of lackluster. And in that sense, I think we've made a huge impact. NEMCOG's Constant Contact was a major source of communication, reaching over 300 partners whenever we need to, to help motivate them. 500 US-23 Heritage Route "Discover Me" signs, and yard signs and posters, perhaps you saw them scattered throughout the region. There were four major high-frequency weekly runs through the entire month of September leading up to the October events that occurred with Michigan radio. And I don't know, this is out of Ann Arbor, I don't know that people totally fathom what an impact this is, and the caliber of the audience that we're reaching, but we have the evidence from the NEMCOG website that most of the people hitting Northeast Michigan's website, US-23 Heritage Route, are coming from Ann Arbor, and that is a demographic that is very appealing, I think, to generating the type of economic activity that can contribute to everything else that's going on in Northeast Michigan. If you're interested, I have some of the statistics on the reach of Michigan radio. Quite honestly, that's where the majority of your money went, where the majority of our money went, since I'm also a city taxpayer. And I think it was worth it, well worth it. A lot of names were mentioned in the soda little run that they do between their programming that drew a lot of attention to Northeast Michigan, to Alpena, to the organizations associated with our region, and in any event, this is probably the biggest impact. WCMU, that would be everything south of Mount Pleasant, reaching the entire state from coast to coast. WCMU is probably the next major contribution, reaching everything north of Mount Pleasant, and again, a huge demographic, also feeding sort of an enthusiasm locally, a lot of local listeners. The Alpena News was a major boon for us for the last three years. A lot of in-kind support, reaching 10,000 households with a four-page spread insert three times at each of these 10,000 households, and this year, I made a mistake, the towns I listed in your written report that you all should have received, they are actually Iron Mountain and Escanaba. Those towns received three four-page inserts in their publication, their local newspapers as well. The Lake Huron Discovery Tour and NEMCOG Facebook accounts were utilized extensively. This year, local radio stations really jumped on board, we were able to provide some financial contributions to them, but they match, if not more than match, from WHTZ, True North, and Carol Broadcasting, to really create some local domestic enthusiasm for, so that MACNE could then focus on the external outreach, which is really what our focus is. Copies of receipts and invoices of all expenditures using city monies have been provided to the clerk's office, as in the past, and so if you need further elaboration on all of that, the detail is there. We are actually, Mary Ellen Jones is leading an effort to have a presentation of the Innovative Tourism Collaboration, on the subject of innovation tourism collaboration at the 2018 Pure Michigan Governor's Conference in Grand Rapids this coming March. So this whole project will be highly, and we were the recipient of the Governor's Award, and now we're able to proudly present the successes of this project statewide, so that's kind of exciting, and showing again the wherewithal of this endeavor. Again, it's an entirely volunteer effort. We're very thankful for your confidence and trust in MACNE and the Lake Huron Discovery Tour concept. I provided two links for you, one to a WBKB interview done by Chris and Katie, and then also a WCMU radio commentary that I did, giving a little deeper history behind all of our efforts. The city has prominently represented there, and that's really kind of exciting. Where we go from here, I'm not sure. MACNE is, if you may recall, about 10 years old now, later or not, and we have struggled with our purpose, in the sense of applying different projects in a way to achieve our purpose. And I think we're at a point of transition where we've made a statement, we've made an impact, but sustaining ourselves as a separate Michigan nonprofit corporation is becoming increasingly difficult. I think what we're probably going to do is end up being absorbed into NEMCOG. We've received permission from NEMCOG to become a formal subcommittee of the US-23 Heritage Route Management Council, which is a perfect fit for us. You may know that in the history of our existence, we created our own website when we were doing the Passport to the Arts projects, that you were all integrally involved in, it led to an MML grant, $25,000 grant. And in that process, we decided that we were wasting resources by duplicating something that NEMCOG was already doing, and that it's providing a very comprehensive website for our region. And we're kind of at a point now where we've created enough of an identity and enough relationships with various municipalities and organizations that perhaps our governance would be best guided by incorporating ourselves into NEMCOG as a functioning committee, rather than trying to maintain our independence, filing taxes and things of that sort on a regular basis. So that's probably on the horizon in the coming year, and then from that, it begs the question, what about Lake Huron Discovery Tour? And going back to the initial point and concerns, I think it's really contingent upon whether surrounding municipalities and organizations can cough up the resources necessary to make this happen. And by being more fully integrated with the US-23 Management Council, perhaps we can generate that broader interest, rather than this being fundamentally an Alpena initiative. You know, MACNE was created by four Alpena organizations, Thunder Bay Arts Council, Art in the Loft, the Besser Museum, and the National Art Sanctuary. We are the official corporate entity of the four organizations. It's all Alpena, right? Many of us, all of those organizations are pretty broad regional representatives, but the reality is, the people who are thoroughly engaged in them are Alpena, or Alpenites, as we might say. By shifting our attention towards a NEMCOG structure, we might be able to generate the type of interest from these surrounding communities that could maybe take this whole endeavor into a new generation of support. So that's it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address those, and I'll keep you posted as we learn more.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The trust and the confidence you have in us is very much appreciated. I personally, teaching what I teach, don't take utilization of public funds lightly, so we've been very conscientious to get the biggest bang for the biggest, or the biggest bang for the buck.
Well, thank you, Tim, it was a good presentation. I really don't have an opinion as to how you perceive in the future, but I think you can pretty much count on, at least the current council, continuing to support, to support your efforts in both the, well, it's not Passport anymore, it's the Lake Huron Discovery Tour. From my perspective, just briefly, Alpena is the economic hub of Northeast Michigan, and if we, if we're the only ones that financially participate in something, and it's bringing people to Alpena, and they have to go through these other communities to get here, and those other communities want to do something to attract people while they're on their way, I've always been fine with that. I mean, it always would be great if the others would contribute as well, but we've seen that that's not always the case, so.
And I think that's a very good point. I know that we on the committee were very conscious of this, and I think we saw it the same way, whether you're coming from the south, or the north, or from the west, we are kind of the center of gravity in a way, and it's indicative of the fact that we were willing to invest in this.
Sure.
So it may come in a different form, who knows? But you know there was a couple of years between the brainstorming of Passport to the Arts, which was really successful, and we took about two years to regroup, and then Lake Huron Discovery Tour imagined itself. I'm not saying we have to wait that long, but it may take a year to regroup and rethink this. I think the point is always rejuvenating through innovative thinking, focused on arts and culture. We don't want to get stuck in a rut, that's for sure.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, no one finished business, so we have new business resolution number 2017-10, authorizing submission of Coastal Zone Management Grant application on behalf of NOAA for educational and public access facilities on the Thunder Bay River.
City staff was contacted by Jeff Gray, Sanctuary Manager, regarding participation in the Coastal Zone Management Program grant application for improvements on the Thunder Bay River shoreline behind their facility, and Jeff is present tonight, if you have any questions of him as we go through this. The city submitted a very similar grant application back in 2014 to the Coastal Zone Management Focus at that time. So, Jeff did approach us about possibly trying to revive this, and we met with Jeff on November 9th, 2017, to discuss resubmitting the application with modifications. The city would be submitting the grant application as the funding agent with support in preparation of the application from NOAA staff. As the previous application was unsuccessful, city staff has made modifications to the project to both reduce the cost and improve use of local and potentially donated materials. Proposed cost of the revised project is $182,500, and there was a cost breakdown included in the PEAK. Coastal Zone Management Grants are funded at 50% of the total project cost, with the local match comprising either cash or in-kind materials and labor. The last application that we submitted, the local match was basically 100% in-kind services and labor. There was no cash. Thus, the local match for this project is $91,250. This would be borne by either NOAA or through donated materials and labor, and I know that Jeff has been in discussion with a gentleman who had indicated, who had committed to the donated services and labor last time, and we'll be meeting with him later this week. The city would not be committing any funds toward the project, but would be providing engineering services utilizing our in-house staff. If the Alpena City Council approves of the submission of this application, they will need to approve Resolution 2017-10, which is attached. And just a couple of the modifications that we've done is, before there was basically a block sitting wall that formed, the seats are all there. Instead, we've gone to like a shot rock, like a blast rock, like is on the shoreline at Bayview Park. Those are pretty flat. We worked to get those set in there so we could provide the seating area as well as the steps out of that material. Most of it is aggregate, so that we're not hard surfacing down in the potential floodplain area, but there is some hard surface pathway areas accessing it. And then we're also working, the local sailing club wants to move their dock over closer to NOAA and partner with NOAA and some of those training activities. And then we've also included a canoe kayak launch in there for accessibility. That is one of the key elements for Coastal Zone is accessibility to the waterfront. This is basically an educational facility for NOAA to use right on the water's edge.
How many people do you think this would seat?
I think you could easily fit, you know, a couple of classrooms, so you're probably in the 80 to 100 people in there. We've also, at the time, have incorporated barrier-free so that if there is people with mobility impairments, that they would have access to those same services at the upper level, or they could come down the barrier-free access ramp from the east down into that lower section for those same services.
Have we made changes, enough changes since 2014 that this has a better chance, I believe?
Based, and Jeff, you can certainly jump in here.
Some of the feedback was when we did initially apply, there was, I think, 30 different, it wasn't that it didn't score high, but it was there was quite a bit of competition that time. Entire office, they held their retreat at our building, and we walked through the project, and so some of the changes came with some direct feedback from the ops and creative base.
Sir Hassan?
The application deadline, I think, is December 15th, so that's, this is very rough at this time. We'll be finalizing it. NOAA staff will be putting a lot of the commentary and the vendors together to go into the application. We'll be providing the drawings, cost estimates, et cetera, for it, and assembling the package and submitting it to Coastal Zone Management.
I move we approve Resolution.
Just so, you're aware of it, at that same meeting, I think there was a presentation made by the Rivers Center, or at least in something similar, with the folks from CZ about, and they were very enthusiastic. And even though they're above the dam, which normally has been the cutoff because of navigable waters, they said there were ways to make an application by them if they wish to work them, and they were encouraged to do so. And they're applying on their own as a 501(c)(3) which they can, so unlike NOAA, which had to go through the city, they're not. They know that, you know, their chances may not be that great, but if nothing else, they're getting their foot in the door for a future year and get the application in. So, I wanted to let you know that they are doing that. They came totally unaware of what was happening with NOAA and with the fact that because NOAA was going through us, because they initially came and asked us to be the applicant, and I said we really couldn't, we already were committed to NOAA. And they're able to do it on their own, they just thought it would be maybe a better chance going through the city. But they are going to be applying as well for the same grant.
And if it doesn't make it, we could be the applicant.
Right. And we could assist them next year, whether that means we're the applicant or simply put more resources, that that be the focus grant for next year rather than this year.
If we put two in one list.
Yeah. Usually what they do is they come to you and say, which one's your priority? And so that's why I just said, we're not going to apply for two. So, they went ahead on their own.
Is that a challenge?
I'm not going to do it, no. I move we approve Resolution 2017-10.
Second. Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Johnson? Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noah?
Yes.
I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss water service litigation.
Second. Okay, Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Pardon?
Nielsen, this is to go on.
Yes.
Noah?
Sexton?
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noah?
Yes.
I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss water service litigation.
Second. Second. Okay, Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Pardon?
Nielsen, this is to go on.
Sexton?
Johnson? Johnson? Nielsen? This is to go on.
Sexton?
Johnson? Johnson? Yes. Walagora?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Pardon?
Nielsen, this is to go on.
Sexton?
Johnson? Johnson? Yes. Walagora?
Sexton?
Johnson? Johnson? Nielsen? This is to go on.
Sexton?
Johnson? Johnson? Yes. Walagora?